The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Robert, we'll get going if Jesse joins us in a few minutes. He'll be able to catch up, if that's okay. Would you like to start the work session and introduce our guest? And then we can, you can take it over from there.
Yes, over the last several years, Rob and I have reviewed various programs that are out there to assist us with being more transparent with regards to information that's shared with the public. Also, there's programs out there that allow for us to update in a more timely fashion, a more consistent fashion, and save us a lot of time and energy. There's several different software products that are out there that we've reviewed over the years at different price points. We both believe that this ClearGov software, which we've had a previous demonstration, kind of meets our, you know, I guess, sweet spot with respect to decent program, a good program that, you know, is, in terms of prices, is relatively less expensive than some of the others that are out there that have a lot of bells and whistles. So, Rob Battaglia is here from ClearGov, and he's going to run through, you know, the capabilities of this software, answer questions that you might have, and just take it from there. We're not really necessarily asking for, you know, it certainly was not in our budget for next year. We didn't feel it was appropriate to put in the budget until, at very least, the council has at least seen, you know, seen it, and, you know, have a good feel for what it's all about. So, with that, you know, keep that in mind from our perspective. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rob to kind of run us through his presentation, if that's okay.
Sure thing.
Okay. Rob, you're up.
Robert, thank you so much. The town council appreciate this opportunity to present to you. Just give me one second as I pull up my screen here for you. Can everyone see my screen? Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. So, as Robert introduced me, my name is Rob Battaglia. I am the representative here from ClearGov. And for those who don't know our company, we are a cloud-based technology company for smaller and medium-sized local governments. So, today I'm going to show you a product demonstration of a few different suites of solutions that your team has taken a look at over the last couple of years here. But before we do that, I'm just going to show you a couple PowerPoint slides, just to set the stage and give you some context to what I'm going to walk you through. And throughout the presentation, I'm going to take some pauses and open it up to questions. So, just for the sake of time, if you could just hold the questions during those pauses, just so we can get through everything in this condensed timeframe. I know you guys are very busy. That would be terrific. So, our company, what we know about local governments out there, from our clients, from folks we talk with every day, and candidly, from my own personal experience, I used to work in local government, what we hear is that folks like yourselves, and your staff, and your colleagues, you guys have a never-ending list of competing priorities, and you're always being asked to do more with less. And in this day and age, in 2020, where, you know, in almost every other aspect of society, where information is at your fingertips with Google, and iPhones, and iPads, you know, there's a lot of strain being put on local government. And that was before COVID. And for some of your colleagues, I imagine, things get a lot harder. We can't have, you know, meetings in person right now. So, there's a big imperative on local government to modernize, even if that was something on the roadmap. And what we're hearing from local governments throughout Connecticut and throughout the country is that, you know, again, if modernization was at your priority, you know, on the roadmap, maybe that was a priority for next year, two years, five years, it's getting pushed up to the top of the heap. And there's a few reasons for that happening. Number one, communication. Right now, we're talking over Zoom. I'm sure if you guys did a poll internally, if that was going to happen at the beginning of the year, I'm not sure where that would have fallen, but we've rapidly had to modernize very quickly. And a lot of local government interaction and day-to-day operations is still happening. It's based around this idea that you can do it in person, and that's got to rapidly change because we don't know where we're going with. Number two, making sure that everything is secure. That was before COVID. You know, there's some horror stories out there of ransomware attacks, and people trying to hack into local government, making sure that all your solutions, especially on a, from a financial perspective and operational perspective, is secure. Number three, being, making sure that you have the tools out there to collaborate and be flexible, and making sure that everyone can communicate, can access important documents, and just making sure that you're flexible and dynamic for a changing environment. So, these are all the feedback we're hearing from local governments out there. And, you know, I'm sure you guys have been pitched a lot, you know, Robert kind of mentioned at the beginning that you've taken a look at some technology out there. You know, a lot of the technology out there, if you are looking to modernize, you know, a lot of it's really expensive. A lot of it's really hard to use. It's built for the New York Cities and the Bossins of the world, not for a smaller or medium-sized local government out there. And even if you can't afford it, it's really time-consuming and a pain in the butt to implement. So, you know, our company's really taken a different approach. We have designed a suite of software solutions, really designed for smaller and medium-sized local governments that are turnkey, and that no matter what your operation looks like, they're really easy to get up and running. And I'm going to show you, like I said, a few different softwares, some are on the communication transparency side of things, some are on the operational side of things. But four key things I just want you to keep in the back of your mind as I walk you through everything. Number one, everything is really easy to implement. There are no integrations or anything like that. I mean, we're talking about a very quick onboarding process, where literally your team just has to send us a few different reports from your accounting software. We're not talking about a lot of work. And then we do all that heavy lifting to get everything up and running for you to utilize. Number two, our solutions are a lot more affordable than a lot of the other solutions out there. They're relatively easy to afford, and they're priced for a local government, not for a larger municipality. And it's just based on an annual subscription, and we'll be walking through price towards the end. We'll also put together a pricing proposal for your team. Number three, they're really easy to use, just like in every other aspect of society, where whether you're five years old or 85 years old, you can use a lot of the modern technology out there. We've designed a suite of software solutions that anybody in local government can utilize today and tomorrow. But probably the most important thing, and I'm sure your colleagues on the finance team would agree with this, you know, a lot of their jobs to take complex information and put it in a format that's digestible, both for the internal stakeholders on this call, for your internal stakeholders throughout the community, and for the public in general. And at the heart of our solutions, that's exactly what they aim to accomplish. And really, here's what we're looking at. We're looking at you guys keeping your current process, the things that you like about it the way it is, and just taking that next step towards modernization, and creating more efficiencies, and making your operation that much better and great. And the two I'm going to really focus on are our budget solution, which comes with budgeting and forecasting, and then our transparency solution as well. Before I move forward, does anybody have any questions about anything I just said? Perfect. So, I'm going to move forward. So, we're going to talk about our transparency solution first. This is a platform that allows the town to better communicate with its residents, whether it's from a financial perspective, from just a general operational perspective, from a metrics perspective, and just a platform to keep residents much more engaged and increase civic engagement. And you can actually find the platform, we've already started building for the town on cleargov.com. You can actually just find it here, which is what I've pulled up. And this basic platform basically is trying to accomplish two things. Number one, it's trying to make it easier for your team internally to communicate with residents by putting information in a really digestible format, in an infographic-based way. And number two, it's a way for you internally to have some tools to better communicate, both internally and externally. So, first thing you'll notice is that we take some basic information about the town, whether it's demographic information or your actual financial numbers, and putting it in a format, in this infographic format. So, first thing we'll notice is this demographic snapshot. Again, it's an infographic-based format, but you'll notice context, not only in this section of the profile, but throughout the platform. And that's really what our platform's trying to do, is help tell the story, help tell the narrative of the town, and the information for the community in a much more impactful way. And I'm going to slice and dice these numbers in a little bit, but we'll also put your financial numbers in a format that's really digestible. So, we're moving away from this idea of maybe putting, you know, a budget in a PDF format, a 300-page PDF that someone has to scroll through. This is really for somebody to get a bite-size, you know, number here, and be able to slice and dice the numbers if they want. So, we're looking at total revenue and expense numbers, based on your chart of accounts, based on, we see the context of these numbers. During the onboarding process, we'll update all of this. Right now, this has some limited numbers, just based off public information, but during an onboarding process, we would populate this with all of your numbers. But your demographic numbers, demographic information, this is something that's already in the profile, just to show you a little bit further, kind of what this entails. So, we're seeing your demographic numbers broken down. And the first chart is on a timeline, population over time, daytime population chart, population age group. And by the way, all of this data is coming from the Census Bureau as of, I believe, 2018. It's all sourced underneath in each of these panels. We see general household information, economic information, household income, and housing stats. Any questions about anything I've showed so far? And now, what this platform allows you to do, both again internally and externally, is allow you to kind of slice and dice these numbers. So, this is kind of an interactive way to see your budget. Instead of reading it, it's a way to actually have this data at your fingertips and understanding what these numbers really mean. So, first thing, we'll see them in these different charts that are interactive. And right now, your data, I believe this is from a few years ago, but again, this would have your recent budget numbers in it. It'd have interactive charts. And I'll show you a platform, a version of this that has up-to-date numbers, but you're able to look at an analysis of all these budget numbers and criteria. So, I'm going to do that here with the Public Works of a ClickView Analysis. Here's something that the platform would give you, is an ability to do peer grouping with this. So, whether that is from an internal perspective, as you're building your budget during the course of your operational cycle there, or if you want to allow the public to take a view at this, it's up to you. It's in your fingertips, how many layers of the onion you want to show here. But doing peer grouping to examine your spending in certain categories versus other communities in the general area or throughout the state that are non-ClearGov clients, this is any municipality. So, our normal algorithm will pull a peer group for you based on median home value, distance, and population, but you can pull as many of these peer groups as you want. So, right now, we're looking at a limited peer grouping right now, based off of Public Works Analysis, so on a per capita basis. But as you can see, this will pull pretty robust peer groups based on any criteria you want to put into here. So, that's just the kind of the basic profile, but we've already started building out. What you can make this profile is a very robust platform. So, here's kind of what a fully-blown-out kind of platform looks like. First thing you'll notice is you're able to dress this up. And you would house this on your website somewhere, and we'd, you know, help build a banner, or a button, or help put this on your website. And really, you have the ability to dress this up and utilize it however you want. I mean, it's a very powerful tool. So, first thing you'll notice in the fully-blown-out one is, you're able to add commentary throughout some of these statistics. So, here we have, in this example, the mayor adding commentary around the budget numbers, helping tell that story a little bit further. And you'll notice, this is already broken on the chart of accounts. So, this account has had that onboarding. So, look how interactively we can kind of dive through the budget numbers here, and go through those chart of accounts. So, whether you're a town council member during the budget cycle, during the budget process, and you want to find out some spending numbers, but you don't want to, you know, wait for reports to come to you, you can actually have this at your fingertips, whether it's department heads trying to figure out where their spending is during the budget cycle, or it's the public looking to see what the budget actually is. This is up to you, you know, how you want to utilize this platform. And underneath, we have a chart. So, we're seeing it in both an infographic way and a bar chart kind of view here. And it really is up to you how granular you want to get. So, we have actual numbers, forecasted numbers, over-budgeted numbers, under-budgeted numbers. You really have the ability to tell a very vast picture here. Now, we've looked at things so far from kind of an overall perspective. We also allow you to kind of give your department heads the ability to communicate information, both internally and externally. So, here you can give, you know, the police department, you know, Public Works Department, et cetera, the ability to have their own page in this platform. So, here's an example of what one of these pages looks like. So, here's a police department page in your ClearGov profile. So, we have the police chief telling a little bit of a narrative story around what's going on with his department. And building something like this is super simple, very easy, very intuitive. It's a simple text editor. It's a matter of, do you want a small text box, a large text box? But the ability to communicate statistics and keep performance metrics here. So, in this case, we have the police chief explaining how many 911 calls does the community receive. And this actually comes with a robust chart builder, where literally you just plug in some statistics, and it'll generate the chart that you want. Here, we also have an example of general crime statistics in the community being put out there. But really, this is a canvas for you to explain internally and externally what's going on with each department. You have the ability to communicate events, telling a little bit of a further peek behind the curtain of what's going on with that department's budget, other criteria, you know, upcoming events, PSAs, et cetera, et cetera. Something that we hear from folks all the time, you know, what do residents care the most about? You know, we tend to hear the feedback, it's, when are you going to pave my road? When is that intersection? And when is that project going to be completed? So, based off of client feedback over the last several years, probably the coolest thing we've built in this platform is the ability to communicate directly to residents what's going on with upcoming projects. So, whether this is literally, you know, the 30 roads are going to get paved this year, whether this is a capital project the town is taking on, whether it's a state or county project, or a nearby municipality's project that's going to impact the general community, here's where you can communicate this information to the public. So, let me show you an example of one of these. Here's an intersection improvement page. So, here, this community is communicating what's going on with this intersection improvement, detailing where the project's taking place, showing accompanying images and attachments. You can put here renderings, public hearing notices. This is really a canvas for you, like I've said throughout. So, you can show where the project's taking place, describing the funding of that project, show the timeline of that project, where we're at with it, who the point of contact is, kind of what the timeline of it is, the projected versus the current timeline. You can also make this an interactive platform, where if residents have questions about projects, they can send you a message here in the platform, and you would receive it privately, where you can answer that message. And then, if it's a question that you determine, you know what, I bet other residents would have this question, you can then post that thread publicly. Probably the thing we hear the most positive feedback about is the ability for residents or anyone to subscribe to email updates to these projects. So, they can subscribe their email, and every time you make an update to this project, they'll get notified in their inbox. So, the things that they care the most about, maybe they can't attend a board meeting to find out what's going on, maybe they're checking the website. Now, they can literally just get an email about it. And what's great about this platform, it's really powerful. We've had folks throughout the country utilize it for many different ways. And over the last couple of months, let me show you an example of this. Here's a community in Kentucky who's using it for a COVID-19 update page. So, not only are they communicating in a centralized area, updates that residents may need to know about relative to COVID, and the ability to put whatever kind of information in it, whether it's relative to the community, from a federal or state perspective. Here we have a timeline, the ability to ask questions, additional information. But again, people can subscribe to email updates. So, not only do they not have to, not only can they go, this is mobile-friendly, not only can they go on their phone and figure out what's going on, but every time there's an important update, they can be rest assured that they're going to get that right into their inbox. I know I showed a lot of information, and there are additional features and functionality within this platform, but just wanted to take a kind of a general kind of pause here before I move on to another solution we have, and just see what your thoughts are so far.
Does anybody have any questions for Rob at this point? I think it's a very interesting way to display some information that could at times be a little dry for the public, looking at numbers. When you're looking at a graph or a chart, it visually makes it a little bit more understandable. So, I think a lot of it is visually appealing. My only question is, the information would be provided by our finance department, is that correct? Or the department that's going to be putting some of this information out there, Robert?
Correct. So, financial numbers would be done by, you know, whomever on your team, whether it's the finance director, town manager, and then you have the ability to, you know, give across the town login access. So, for, you know, the Department of Public Works, you could give someone within that department login access for them to handle that aspect of the platform.
Yeah. And you know, Kathy, some of this information that would be, that would go in here, is not necessarily information that would need to be given by Rob and me specifically. I mean, that's something we could hand off to an intern, for example, to provide. I mean, it's not, you know, real complicated to provide this information. We just need to show them where it's at, and tell them, you know, this is what we want you to do on a, you know, a daily, weekly, monthly, you know, annual basis, you know, as we build the budget or whatever. So, it doesn't necessarily take up, it'll probably take up a lot of our time to set it up the first time and decide what we want to do. But let's say the council says, hey, we'd like to, you know, show this in a little bit more detail. We could assign somebody to put that together and set it up, you know, so, and to a certain degree, maintain it. So, you know, that's what I like about it as well.
Okay, Robert, I do have a question, though. I mean, if we have garbage in, we get garbage out. I mean, is there any kind of edit, or any kind of safeguard, where if someone inputs bad information, how far can that actually go in screwing things up in the system?
So, this is a very customizable platform. So, the great thing about it is, when you're building information on this, you need to pick and choose what's going to be publicly displayed. So, the other great thing about it is, you know, maybe some of these department pages, for instance, maybe you want to make pages and monitor metrics on a monthly basis for internal purposes, or whatever it could be. And then, maybe on a, you get down to the point where you want to then make it public. So, you know, you can build things and have that internal oversight and review before you post things publicly. It's really in your fingertips, but it's a platform that has a lot of, quote-unquote, as you would say, safeguards in it, to make sure that, you know, you're putting out the best information in it. But there's a lot of tools there that, you know, it's not, you know, black or white. There's a lot of, you know, ability to adjust it to how your operation works.
Yeah. So, this is Rob Buden. I think to Rob's point and Deb's question, it's more, you know, we have the, we would have the ability to turn things on and off as, you know, things are built, if you will, and updated. So, you know, perhaps as a step in the process, you know, Robert or myself, or somebody else we designate would be looking at these things prior to, say, putting them on, you know, public access, or having the public look at it, or, you know, even going before it goes to you to make sure the information you're getting is correct. So, there's just checkbox, check on, check off. So, it's a pretty easy process to maintain and control.
And you know, that's, and that's true, that we would be able to review it before it gets posted. The other thing is, you know, as we, this platform, this software allows us to display a lot more information in a shorter period of time than we've done in the past. And as you, as you develop more information for people, there's certainly more opportunities for, you know, information not to be 100% correct. And we, you know, as you know, as all the council members know, even when we're doing the budget process, you know, Rob and I are not 100% accurate, maybe 99.9%, but, you know, every once in a while, we give you information that we have to update and say, oh, well, we told you something at the last meeting, but it's really not quite that way. So, yes, that's always a possibility. But, you know, I'm thinking of, hey, it's better to get out more information that can be reviewed. And because a lot of this is done automatically in terms of comparison from the previous year or the previous month, and that's already stored, you know, you're building on something, and you don't have to recreate it all the time, or review it all the time, at least the past years, which you've already vetted, so to speak.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from anybody on the council?
Yes, Kathy, Madam Chair, it's Rosemary Moranti. A question, I, you know, I understand that the data that comes from accounting is sent to ClearGov, and ClearGov uploads it, correct?
Depends. So, I'm going to show you our budgeting platform, which would actually feed into this, which would eliminate that process. During the initial onboarding, you would send us your data, and really, you're doing it so we can build this to reflect your chart of accounts. And then, it would be based off that. And then, the newest data, if you didn't have our budget platform, you would send it, you know, on whatever cycle you set up with our data team, we're talking a very quick turnaround. That's only for the financial numbers. If you had our budget platform, it would automatically feed into this.
Okay. Because I was, you know, in reading the FAQs last night, it said that there was no real-time integration?
So, that's with your accounting software. And the reason we do that is, that saves you time, which makes your life easier. It kind of ensures that nothing will break. And we've built it to turn key. So, if you ever change your accounting software, it doesn't require additional service space on your end. We kind of take all that heavy lifting on our end. So, it's really much more beneficial for you.
Okay. So, it really ends up being a combination of things that you upload for us, and then things that we input directly?
Most of the stuff you would be, we would be assisting you with anything you're essentially uploading. But our, by the way, our customer support team, they're a big differentiator in the industry. We get a lot of, a lot of great feedback from them. You get unlimited training and support throughout the life of being a ClearGov client. And not only that, unlike most tech companies out there, where they charge you an hourly rate for customer service, it's unlimited and ongoing.
An item like you had, like the mayor's comments on a budget item. Now, are those, that kind of information, is that just inputted directly by the municipality?
Correct. I mean, most, really, the only things that we would be directly uploading would be the initial financial numbers and kind of building out the chart of account for you. But honestly, we're talking a very quick turnaround to get this up and running. We're talking about a couple of weeks. And then, if there was ever any data sets you needed to send us for us to get in here, we're talking very quick turnaround, you know, a day or two, if that.
Okay. I think I understand that there's both. It's sort of a combination.
Correct. But I would say after that initial onboarding, it's almost mostly done internally by your team. So, the-
Okay. So, the most of the updating of the day, even the financial data is done internally then, at some point?
For the most part, yes. Especially if you have the budget platform, which would feed into it.
Okay. Thank you. No, thank you.
And I think that's, if anyone else doesn't have any more questions, I think that's a great segue into the other platform your team wanted me to show you, which is our budgeting platform. So, this solution is a back-office solution. Let me find my tab real quick here. Here we go. This is a back-office solution to help your team with the budget building process, and to make everyone's life easier and an ability to collaborate. So, this platform comes with really two main modules I want to focus on. It does come with a more robust peer grouping platform, which is benchmarking, which is similar to the peer grouping on the public-facing side of the platform. But the two I really want to focus on are forecasting and budget building. So, forecasting, this would give you the ability to create unlimited forecasts for any fund, not just general fund, but any fund, and it works N minus two. So, if you plugged in 10 years of historical data, you could do an eight-year forecast, for instance, five years of historical data, three-year forecast. Takes about 10 minutes to build a forecast. Let me show you one I've already generated for demo purposes here. So, again, during that onboarding process, just like we'll remake that chart of accounts for the other, for the other solution, this one would be a similar process. So, this would be your chart of accounts. And basically, the chart on the left feeds into the graph on the right. And it's not just top-line revenue and expense numbers, it's all those parent, child, and sub-sub-subcategories as well. And it's using artificial intelligence to do this forecast. So, let me go back to that other one. You know, it's not just creating a forecast off the previous year. You know, if that year was a peak, or a valley, or an aberration, you know, it's using all that previous data to use that forecast. Now, what's great about this tool, obviously, it generates a very robust forecast for you. You can export any of this data out of Excel and plug that into your accounting software for whatever purposes you want. You can literally grab this image and plop it on the presentation. But more importantly, there is no limit to how many forecasts you can create, and they're customizable. So, for instance, you know, I could build literally 500 forecasts over a month if I wanted to, if you wanted to get that, that nitty-gritty. But you can customize these. So, if you know that, hey, in year two, let me go to state aid, property taxes, maybe property taxes. If I know in year two or year three, a built-in increase is coming, I can come in here and change that, and customize this, and make it more accurate, or try different scenarios. So, with state aid, you know, you could try, hey, is state aid going to drop 10% this year, 20% next year, and try all those different forecasts and scenarios, and customize any of these numbers. Any questions about the forecasting tool?
Nope.
So, the forecasting tool, what's great about that, it's cloud-based, but then that feeds into your budget building process. So, this tool would also allow you, just like you can build unlimited forecasts, you can build unlimited budgets. So, I'm going to literally build a budget in real time as we're talking right now. So, you can build this budget for any of your funds. You would just name it, pick the year, and pick your fund. So, you could general fund, all funds, any, any fund. And then, you can build your budget however you currently do it, standard increase, standard decrease, prior-year budget numbers, zero-based budgeting. But because we also have the forecasting module, we can literally feed that into our budget process. So, I'm going to build our revenue baseline off the forecast, and I'm not going to- And I'm not going to change the expenditures for this purposes. So we'll technically have a surplus in this instance, but I want to show you, uh, just kind of how this gets dressed up here. So, uh, a few things happen. Uh, number one, we see our progress bar up here at the top. This is a nonlinear progress bar as your team is building the budget. We notice a few panels here. We see our total expenses, total revenue and projected surplus. And really what this tool is, if I can describe it in kind of a one sentence, it's like building a budget in a spreadsheet, except it's on steroids and it's in the cloud. So it's the, it, it has all those, uh, simplistic, uh, you know, functionality of a spreadsheet budget that people like to build it in. But it allows you for your entire team to collaborate right in here. And it's a much more powerful tool. So we will build this off your chart of accounts, literally down to the account ID level of the budget. So it will reflect again, all those chart of accounts internally, and we do all that work for you. Let me just take out a couple of these columns to make it easier to read. Now the chart up top here, the bar chart, this reflects your actual budget numbers in a bar graph, uh, perspective. So if I roll over here, I can literally see actual and budgeted numbers for each of these years. So this would be the town's numbers. If you have the forecast, you can plug that into here as well. So when your team is building the budget now, uh, this is a much more powerful tool for them to do that. So let's say the beginning of the process, right? They, they're building the budget. So they want to make some line item changes to get started, build that baseline. So I'm just going to do a couple of changes here. Watch, uh, watch the chart, by the way. Watch it change when I go into the line items. So that chart reflects where you're at in the budget. So if you ever have, you know, for instance, department heads, the finance team, town council here, if you notice that certain line items are over budgeted, some are under budgeted. This gives you all that information right as you're building the budget to create a much more efficient process so that, hey, maybe this one's over, is over budgeted. Let's move the money to the one that's under budget to create a more efficient process here. Uh, a few things to note. Number one, uh, this thing has a lot of intelligence in it. So it not only, as you were changing these line items, uh, the parent category has also got reflected and those all automatically changed. So that would happen if you were changing percentages or the raw, raw numbers. Um, it's really easy to read. So you can tell what's been edited as you've been, uh, you know, making, making the budget here. And then your team has some tools here to just empower them for, for a much more efficient process. If there are certain line items that they have to lock, you know, maybe this is based on a union contract or something like that, they can lock it, unlock those line items from an administrative perspective. They can add notes and justifications here. And so they can make a note that not only that they can see, but more importantly, that anyone who has access to this platform and that line item specifically, uh, will see. So anyone would see these, uh, these notes here that are highlighted green. So let's say they built that, 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 uh, first version of the budget and they named it baseline. So it gives them that simplistic process of, of building a spreadsheet budget, but now cloud-based and remotely, uh, and very securely, anybody can come in here and collaborate, uh, when the administrators have given login access out. So the next thing we'd want to do is give out, um, some login access. And there's three buckets of logins that come with this solution and no limit to how many logins you can give out for this one or the other solution that we saw earlier. So editor, this would be the administrators of the budget, um, whomever that is, you know, the finance team, the town manager, requesters, this would be, I'm assuming your department heads and anybody who would need request access, uh, for the budget. And then finally, there's actually a reviewer bucket, and this would be for maybe a town council member or an advisory board member, someone who wants to watch the budget process take place over those four, five, six months. Instead of getting the budget at, you know, at, at the end of the cycle and then reviewing each line item, they can watch the sausage happen. Uh, the sausage, um, process happen in, in, in real time. And you can actually make comments in that note section I just showed, uh, during the budget process. So you can make your voice be heard even more clearly during the budget process. Uh, but you would not be able to make edits. So you can give out request access here. I'm going to give it out to myself. I'll be the, uh, police chief in this instance. So you just add their, um, name, title, department, email. Um, and then you're going to sign on their portion of the budget very easily. So I'm going to assign the police chief, in this case, the police division of the budget. And again, no limit to how many of these login access you can give out. And now the finance team, the, the administrators of the budget and the police chief can now have the approval denial process right here in the cloud. And just like they can do that here, they're giving out request access. Actually, department heads can also give out sub request access. So maybe, you know, the police chief has a, uh, someone under him who, who has certain line items that submits a request to the police chief, and then they have their own approval denial process. They can actually do that right here in this platform as well. But, uh, we're going to give out request access. We're going to click who it's going to. We're going to set a deadline for them to get that request in. You can set an email reminder frequency, uh, kind of a nudge at, hey, make sure you get your budget numbers in. I'm going to click none. So don't get any emails. A cover email will go out, uh, to your team, whomever's getting this, uh, login access with a short tutorial video. And by no means is that the only training and support you'll get. That's just kind of a reminder video as the years go on. I can edit this, add attachments to it. So I'm going to send them that request access. And as your team's building this budget, this is just a much more simpler process, especially now with people working remotely, uh, where you can track literally in this module, in this platform, who has submitted their request and who has not in it with one click of the button. And then from the, uh, perspective of, um, someone who is building this budget, uh, from your requesters perspective, um, they'll be able to then come in here and, um, submit their requests and you'll be able to have, uh, an approval denial process right here in the platform. So as they submit their requests, um, they'll literally be able to go line item by line item and approve or deny, uh, each line item right here in the platform. So here that we see the status as they're submitting those requests, they would say submitted. And a green error and a green thumb or a, a green thumbs up or a red thumbs down, you'd be able to have that approval denial process for a lot, each line item. And there is no limit to how many of these request rounds you can have right here in this platform. And as you're doing that, uh, you know, what's the problem with building a, a budget in a spreadsheet? There's usually errors in it. There's an audit trail with this platform. So literally everyone can watch, uh, the budget process take place, but you can see literally every thumbprint being placed on it. So, so there is that level of oversight built into it. There's an attachments library and then you can export any of this raw data out at any point, uh, for your team members here and, and, and present that raw numbers if you want. And, and once you've done built the budget here, it would feed into the other platform and you can easily export this data and plug it back into your accounting software. Uh, I, 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 I rushed that towards the end because I just want to see, I, I, I know we're, we're running pretty quickly on time. I just wanted to open it up to make sure we have some questions on this platform.
Questions from anybody so far?
Kathy, I have a few questions. Um, how long have you been in business? How long has your company been in business? Are you a stock option company? Uh, do you do this nationwide? And how many Connecticut towns are involved with your business at this point?
So we've been around since about 2015. So, uh, five going on six years, we work with over 300 local governments across the country and I believe 33 states. And I believe we have about three or four clients in Connecticut as of right now. Um, I'm candidly based here in New York where we have several clients. Our company's based in, uh, just outside Boston, Massachusetts. So we know the New England and northeast area very well. We have a very large client base. Um, in, uh, in, in this area of the country. Uh, we're, we're a tech startup. We're a private company.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And, uh, I was, I was just going to say, I don't know, Rob, if you wanted to chime in and, and just provide a little bit more context on the, how, how you guys envisioned using this platform and, um, the, the differentiator of how it could, uh, help you guys.
Yes.
Christopher wanted to jump in with a question. Did you want to say something, Christopher?
Yeah. The only, I was going to ask, uh, Rob Budin, I was going to ask him, I know he sent a letter with some of the information we've received, but I was going to ask him to kind of explain how this benefits the town and specifically his department and, you know, budget processes, et cetera.
Right. Okay. So Chris, you mentioned a letter that was sent out, I believe in your package. So that was sort of the email narrative that I had sent Robert, uh, on this whole process. And really the way this works is that we're on the town side with regards to budget procedure. As you know, I mean, obviously there's multiple steps in the process. Before and after it gets to you as the town council. Um, you know, we've been able to, to la, over the last few years, kind of show you things live on the, uh, you know, the computer screen and through Excel. But before that information even gets to that point in time, there was a lot of different steps and a lot of different levels. It's coming from many, many different departments. The theoretically myself, uh, primarily, I should say, is inputting into the spreadsheet that you then see when it gets to you. You know, that information is essentially coming from departments who some have the capability to do it the way we want to show it to you and some don't. Um, this platform I believe is a lot easier for everybody to use regardless of, you know, their computer technology skills or lack thereof. Um, and it make, it makes things one consistent format. Whether it comes from the depart, the department, then to me, then to you, or, you know, to me, to Robert, then to you. Um, everybody's on the same platform. Um, right now we're, we're, you know, using Excel and Word. Um, they obviously are two separate programs. Um, you know, we have multiple spreadsheets per department, per line item that, you know, really can't be put into a single spreadsheet for the department. So, you know, my department and/or the interns, when this first goes out to all the departments are breaking apart spreadsheets, cutting and pasting, um, and emailing separate tabs and, and, and spreadsheets and, and word documents to the departments to get back to us. Um, the departments, again, depending on their technological expertise, um, you know, get it back to us in a, in a format that really isn't conducive to what you want to see as a town council or Robert wants to see. So there's a lot of manual manipulation that goes on by myself before it even gets to Robert and/or they knew the council. Uh, I think this, this platform again is easier for everybody to use. It kind of takes the two concepts of Excel and Word and makes them one. Um, you can attach files to it. You can attach narratives, as Rob said. Um, you know, we could, we have the ability to lock line items out. You know, we internally, uh, try to do the, the payroll and not let the departments, uh, you know, put in payroll. Uh, we can lock them out of that, but they can certainly request, hey, I need two more police officers or I need another, uh, laborer in public works. Um, so that before we even begin to do that, we could, we could add those dollar amounts in. Um, you know, you as the council or Robert even asked, okay, well, what if we increase this line item by, you know, 5% or 2%? What if we decrease it by 1%? What does it look like? What's the bottom line? With a click of a button, this, this can do that for you. Um, the other nice thing about this is that every single, you know, this builds, this budgeting, uh, module and forecasting module builds into what we prepare for you every single month called the financial dashboard, which you'll see tonight. Um, this financial dashboard that you get every month is extremely labor intensive from the way we currently have to do it. Um, this platform or the, the, the first one, the, the, uh, the first platform that Rob went over would make that process dramatically easier. Once this type of budgeting and forecasting module is built. It's truly one of the easiest to use, uh, systems that we've seen over, you know, the last few years that Robert and I have looked at. Um, I do know several towns in the state of Connecticut who have this. And from their finance director's point of view, it's, it's, it's like the best thing that's ever happened. Um, and putting this on their websites for the public to see is, has been a dramatically big help to them. The clarity, the information that's out there, the fact that, uh, individuals, whether it's you as a council member or a town resident or any other town resident can sign up for emails and, you know, see the progress of the, the road of construction and the paving and, you know, the Wheeler project, this WPC project, you know, we can put all that information up there and they can get updates real live in time. I, I think the biggest benefit to this is, is very simply, as Rob stated when he first started this presentation is that we're, we're all being asked to do more with less. We're all at, being asked to do more with a, from a computer technology standpoint. This would dramatically save time, not only every day, but every month and every quarter, every fiscal year to where we, you know, my department, I, Robert, we can all start doing, you know, do other things that maybe aren't happening as frequently as we would like to have them done currently. This would just say, once it's built, like Rob said, it just kind of, it kind of runs and flows. Um, and as we change numbers, as act, more actual data gets behind us, it's, it's right there for you. Um, we're ready to budget for the next year before the, the budget season, frankly, even begins. Um, you know, we're able to add pictures with regards to capital projects, you know, things that we don't do now. You know, for the most part, unless we have, you know, during a town council presentation, um, or a meeting. I just think, I just think this platform is really, really something that is something that will really benefit us, uh, you know, not only right away, but we can build on it and make it even bigger and better, um, and easier for everybody understanding going forward.
Thank you.
I have one quick question, Rob. This is Kathy. Um, so looking forward, would you need additional staff member to, um, monitor this and to be the, a, a single point of contact? I understand to get, get it up and running will require some level of effort, but once it's there, is this going to require a, a person, a person dedicated just to that? To keep it updated?
No, I don't, I don't see that at all. No. I mean, I'm looking at the budget and every single general ledger line item every day anyway. So if anything, you know, I would take it on initially to see if it works, but I, I, you know, over time I would certainly show my staff how to use this. Um, and, you know, at the same time, you know, upload or whatever reports we may need to upload to to build this document. Um, but no, I would not need another staff member to run this. No.
And, and candidly, what we hear from our clients is that this saves people time. So, you know, if you ever go through hardships of staff reduction or people are unable to get to the office, this is a tool that, uh, obviously empowers your team to do more with less. Um, but if, even if you have, if continue to have less, uh, you, there is no loss in productivity, uh, with, with that. And, and this platform is, um, again, very easy to get up and running. We're talking, you know, a few weeks uh, on our end, just to get it up and running for you. Very, very little work you have to do on your end to, to get this up and running. And once it's in there, um, it, it gives you a lot of tools at your disposal to make everyone's life easier and ensure there's more data, uh, readily accessible both internally and externally.
Right. And I, I mean, in finance, like, like I said, we're looking at this every day. Everything we do builds on this every single day. So to, you know, simply move information over, not move, not, not, I don't mean to move and stop using what we're currently using because that, that's not possible, but to just have the two systems talk to each other. I mean, really it's only inputting once for what we do day in and day out. It really wouldn't change too much more than that. But the time savings to build the reports that we do for you every month, to build the budget, um, on the various cycles would just be extremely substantial in time saving.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, thanks for that, Rob. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Um, Robert, do you have anything you'd like to add to it? Robert Lee?
I do not have anything else to add. I think it's a good program. I, I think it's certainly worth, um, consideration. And if the council, uh, well, we, he hasn't gotten to the dollar amounts yet. So I know, I know you've seen some of it perhaps and what we handed, handed out, but, uh, maybe, uh, Rob, Pataglia could, could speak to that and, uh, answer some questions about, uh, cost.
Absolutely. And it sounds like, uh, some folks here on this meeting have seen the, the proposal I've sent over, which is a very extensive. Um, I'm just going to pull up the pricing just for reference here. And, and this proposal really just goes into much more detail. Uh, you know, that, then I'm able to show in, in this limited timeframe here, but really walks you through everything. There's an extensive, uh, FAQ in the back that goes over, uh, goes over everything. So basically in terms of pricing, uh, our, our platform is based on an annual subscription. So it's a, you know, it's, it's a SaaS software. So it's a subscription service. Um, our budget platform, so just the budgeting and forecasting, that last kind of two pieces we saw with the benchmarking as well. That solution is $16,000 a year on an annual subscription. Uh, the transparency platform, the first one we looked at, that one as a standalone solution is $8,750 on an annual subscription. Uh, if you wanted to get them both together, get everything, so get everything I showed you tonight. Um, we would actually give you 40% off the, uh, what we call insights, which is the transparency solution. So, uh, those two together would be, um, I believe 21, a little over $21,000 on an annual. It would be uh, 21,250 on an annual subscription. Now there's a, another line item in here, which is our actually third solution, which I'm not sure I'll have time to show you tonight. Which is actually a solution that's brand new, that's coming out June 1st, which is called the digital budget book. And it's really built for actually this town specifically, uh, among, among a few others, which is, which are GFOA distinguished budget presentation award winners. And really helps you build the last piece of, uh, you know, your public facing information that you show, um, which is I believe your, your budget document, um, which I have. um, which I have somewhere in one of these tabs, but um, that budget document that, that, that Rob puts together with some combination of Excel and Word that you've, uh, get the highest level of, uh, certification that we have a solution that would generate a digital budget book. So instead of a PDF budget document that's 300 pages, this would create an interactive budget document uh, for the town and would generate all your charts and graphs. But more importantly, not only would it save Rob hundreds of hours of time putting together the budget document, it would create an interactive one. It's built around that GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award program. So it's the easiest way for the town to continue to achieve that level of uh, excellence in its budget building. And that platform, there's a, there's actually a, a video in this proposal that, that walks you through that platform. Uh, if you wanted to add that on, uh, that was a standalone is 9,500, but if you wanted to add that on, uh, that would get you this $26,950 amount. So really, uh, what, what I've showed you is an à la carte menu. If you went to a restaurant, you get to pick and choose what you want. Um, so, so that's really up to you. Uh, there are onboarding costs with these solutions. Each one, each one of these three has a one-time $2,400 onboarding cost that covers kind of us, you know, building that platform out for you. Um, and, and doing all that data uploading and, and data building for you and housing it on our server. However, if the town was interested in signing up before June 30th as part of our, um, you know, our, our, our ability to try to help you out during COVID and everything and making sure that, uh, you know, uh, you're saving as much money as possible, we would waive any onboarding costs if you signed up before June 30th. So, um, if you, if you are interested in these solutions, there, there is some imperative there to, to, to want to sign up maybe sooner, uh, rather than later there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for that information. Um, Robert, is there anything else you'd like to add? We're coming up to 6:55 and we have to, uh, switch over to the other part of our meeting, but, um, you're, you're not looking, are you looking for a decision this evening or is this just information for us to, to speak about at a future meeting? Is that where you want to go at this point in time?
Yeah, this is an opening, uh, discussion. Uh, we'd like for you to, uh, absorb it, think about it, and, uh, Rob and I will probably come back with, uh, you know, perhaps some suggestions for you to consider going forward.
Okay, that sounds good. I, I thank you to Mr. Bataglia for his presentation. Um, and we have a few minutes before we begin the rest of our, um, our regular portion of our meeting. So with that, I think we have a couple of minutes to take a break before we start again.
Well, I just want to say thank you all for the opportunity. Hope everyone stays safe, stay health, stays healthy out there and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'll be in touch.
Have a great day. Thanks so much.
Thanks.
We're going to begin our regular town council meeting today. It's Monday, May 18th at 7:00 PM. Um, I would like to add a motion to move town council resignation and appointment to the beginning of our meeting. So may I have a motion to do that, please?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Um, so we are moving the town council resignation of Ty Cox. Does somebody have that to read to us, please?
Madam Chair? Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Ty Cox from the town council.
Second.
Okay. There any, um, comments or discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, the next, uh, motion is to appoint Jacob Rocco in Ty Cox's vacancy. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to appoint Jacob Rocco to the town council.
Madam Chair, Dave Underwood, second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. I would just make that effective today. Are there any comments or questions on that motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. That is unanimous. Welcome to our town council, Jacob. And at this point, I would ask our town clerk, Carol Scultecki, to, um, administer the oath of office to Jacob.
Gladly. Do you have Jacob, raise his right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge your duties as a member of the Plainville Town Council according to law, to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jacob.
Congratulations, Jacob.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Jacob. Okay, on to, um, the rest of our agenda. On our next item, we have a public hearing regarding the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act. I will ask, um, our town clerk to please read the notice for that. Carol?
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 18th, 2020, in the council chambers of the Municipal Center One Central Square to hear public comments and consider proposals for the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act dated at Plainville, Connecticut this 14th day of May.
Thank you, Carol. We have, um, I don't know if we have anybody on the line to speak to the public hearing, but I will repeat the phone number to which if anybody wants to speak to it, um, they can do so. The phone number for the public hearing is or 877-853-5247. Do we have anybody on the line for the public hearing, Kevin?
Yes, we do. We have three callers.
Okay.
If people want to also call in, they still need, they need the code as well, so I'm going to get you that real quick in case they're listening on YouTube. Just pull that up real quick. They would need the web ID once they dial the phone numbers you gave. Again, that's 873-9944-1426. Now I'm going to read through.
Uh, Kevin, before you do that.
Yep.
Kathy, with your permission, uh, we have three, uh, applications to participate in the Neighborhood Assistance Act. We have one from the Congregational Church. And that's for, uh, Energy Efficiency Initiative. The second one is from Prudence Crandall Center, Inc. They're out of New Britain. Their annual appeal. And another one from Prudence Crandall Center, Inc. Uh, for energy efficiency purposes as well. So, uh, businesses that would, at, at the council, um, accepts them into the program after the public hearing, later on in the meeting. Donations made by businesses to these organizations uh, would be, would, we get some tax benefit as a result of that. Uh, really, the, 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 um, the purpose of the council review is to just legitimize or acknowledge the fact that these are, you know, um, legitimate nonprofits that operate and provide services in our community. So that's really the role of the council. So with that being said, uh, Kevin could see if there's anybody on the phone lines who would like to, uh, comment about the public hearing.
Okay, so I'll read the last four digits of your phone number and ask you if you have a comment. You can either speak, you have, I think, three minutes. And if you don't, just say no comment and I'll move on to the next caller. So the first caller's number ends in 2411 and you're allowed to talk. Oh, they hung up. All right. Uh, next caller ends in 0072. And you're allowed to talk.
This is Bill Pettit.
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Bill.
Hey, good evening. Uh, William Pettit, 132 Redstone Hill, Plainville. Uh, I would just speak on the behest for people who aren't familiar with Prudence Crandall. We've worked with them, uh, over the past dozen years or so. They're the oldest domestic violence organization in state. They're one of the few that has onsite housing and career counseling as well as in-house, uh, advocacy. They do, they do a fabulous job in the area, taking care of the victims of domestic violence, which we're seeing an upsurge in during, uh, this epidemic time. So, and they've been hit like many of the nonprofits in, in terms of state and federal funding, which initially has dried up. I don't know what they'll see in terms of bounce back and, in terms of, uh, the response of the legislations that's going through the federal government. I know that we're going to have significant trouble at the, the state level, given the money we're spending. I think we'll probably burn through most of the 2.5 to $3 billion rainy day money when we try to make ends meet for fiscal '20 and '21. So I would just give them a thumbs up. They use the money wisely and take care of a very vulnerable part of our population, including many people from Plainville. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Bill. Um, Kevin, do we have another caller on the line? Are there any other callers that wish to speak to the public hearing?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes, I just unmuted, uh, 2411, you're allowed to talk. Caller, your number, phone number ends in 2411. Would you like to leave a comment?
Um, thank you. I'm all set. I
Okay, thank you. Next caller ends in 2535. You're allowed to talk.
Hello? Hi, Kevin? Hello?
Hello, Joanne, you, you're available.
Okay, all right. Uh, may I suggest that if the Prudence Crandall people need some money, why don't they take, uh, why don't they can that, uh, trail project and take that money? But it, it's going to be about 30, 40 million dollars by the time they get through with that trail through Plainville, uh, if they want to do it and, and, uh, give it to the Prudence Crandall people. I, I, I still say I am opposed to the trail. Take the money. We don't, Connecticut doesn't have that money to spend. And if they do, give it to the Prudence Crandall people. Put it to a good use or, or use it for infrastructure throughout the state. Okay, go down, we can. They, they, they're going all different ways through town anyway, so.
Okay, Joanne, thank you for your comment on the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Kevin, do we have any other callers that may wish to speak to us?
We do not have any other callers at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate the comments. Um, if there are no other callers, I will close the public hearing and move on to the next portion of our meeting. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting, please?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the minutes of May 4th, 2020, regular meeting.
May I have a second?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Christopher Wazorko will second that.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Thank you. Um, next section is announcements and reports. Mr. Lee, you have your fund balance policy recommendation under this section. Would you like to speak to that, please?
Sure. The subcommittee made up of three town council members being Christopher Wazorko, Jesse Nazzo and Kathy Puglisi. Uh, met twice. Kathy was not participating in the first meeting, but she participated in the second meeting. Kevin, I believe you have a copy of the fund balance policy by any chance? That, that you can put up on the screen? Did Lisa give that to you?
Yep, I have it. One second.
We've developed a one-page, uh, fund balance policy recommendation. The, the committee, uh, I think unanimously recommended, uh, the policy. And, uh, I'll let the council member speak to it since it's kind of their product, if that's okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Please go ahead.
Uh, real quickly, we met twice. Uh, we did try to use, uh, get some feedback, not only from Rob Budin, but some of the other financial institutions the town now utilizes uh, with regard to borrowing of money, et cetera, financial matters such as that. The biggest, uh, I don't want to say the biggest change, but, uh, under the second, uh, section, policy statement, we are looking to keep, uh, maintain an unassigned fund balance of 12% to 14%. That was something we did spend some time discussing and, and again, with some direct feedback from, uh, some of our financial partners, we, we were looking at maybe a 10 to 12%, but we decided that that may be a little bit too low. So in the end, we're suggesting a 12 to 14% unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. Um, and without actually reading the whole document, I, you know, I trust everyone's had a chance to look at it. And, and, you know, it's pretty straightforward. We were able to pull some information from other towns who already have a policy. So that's part of this, uh, as well as some of our own ideas. So I would just say if anyone has any questions, any of us would be happy to try and answer them.
Kathy, I, I would say that the policy allows for the, for this, uh, because it is a policy to be reviewed by the town council, uh, every two years in January after there's a municipal election. So any new council that, that, uh, gets elected can review the policy, make themselves familiar with it and determine whether any changes should be made to it, uh, on a biannual basis.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Nazzo, do you have anything to add? You were, um, one of the participants as well.
Yes, I, um, I agree. Well, when we met, I thought the 12 to 14% given, given what we're facing now was important. Um, but I really think it's important for everyone to understand why we're doing this. And it's about, you know, stabilizing the cash flow, also, um, you know, giving us a better idea as to what we're going to have at the end of every year and, um, making sure that we're protecting our credit rating and, and our belief is this will continue to increase our credit rating or at least make sure that we're always, you know, rated as highly as we are, if not higher. So I think it's an important thing. I'm glad we worked on it together. Uh, and I really do think, I encourage everyone to take the time to read it. And, um, I think it's, one of the best pieces of this is the fact that it'll be reviewed every two years with a new town council.
Thank you. Um, I also would like to mention that one part of the document, which I think is, um, not only the, the levels with which we are going to, um, attempt to keep our fund balance at, but there's also a statement in there that, um, should the unassigned fund balance fall below a certain threshold, the town manager will prepare a plan for, um, for expenditure reductions or revenue increases and, um, that it would be hopefully done within a two-year time period. So I think that's, um, that's also shows a commitment to keeping our fund balance in a, in an appropriate level. And it also addresses the fact that the town manager will go ahead and prepare a plan to get us to that level. So, um, thank you for those who, um, put this document together and participated in it and I'll certainly open it up to the council for any questions or issues that you might have with it, if you've had a chance to read it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, it's Rosemary Moranti. Uh, I, you know, was able to, to read this and review this, and I do agree with the, uh, 12 to 14%. I know that some municipalities and their policies go a little under that. But I think we certainly, um, in view of the last couple of months, we realize that you have to be uh, a little more conservative and, uh, with these things. And I'm glad that we're keeping it at that level and keeping the provisions to, uh, address it should it dip below those levels. I agree with you that that's a very important provision in this.
Thank you, Rosemary. Does anybody else have anything to add to this policy?
Kathy, the only thing that I would say is that, uh, while we did not put this under new businesses evening, certainly if the council wants to take action on it tonight, they can add it to the agenda. If not, we can put it for action at the next town council meeting as well.
Okay, thank you for that. We only have a few items under our new business, so, um, hearing no other questions or concerns with the policy, is everybody comfortable adding it to our, uh, new business item this evening? If that's the case, I'll ask for a motion to add it under new business.
Madam Chair? Yes, Christopher Wazorko. I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we add approval of the fund balance policy. And I'm just going to make sure I get the right number as, under new business, number three. And we will move tax refunds to number four.
Second, Jesse Nazzo.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any comments or questions about adding this to our Are there any comments or questions about adding this to our agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We have added that to our New Business. If there's nothing else regarding our fund balance recommendation, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our appointments and resignations. We have a firefighter appointment this evening, so may I have a motion to appoint?
Madam Chair?
Jesse Nozo.
Motion to appoint Noel Roach, 8A Huff Street, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Madam Chair, Dave Underwood, second that motion.
A motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Lauren Letterman, 107 Northwest Drive, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Madam Chair, Deborah Tompkins, second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. We have another item on here, item number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Christopher Wazorko, I'll make a motion to acknowledge the town manager's reappointments of Quinn Christopher and William Bolger to the Advisory, Recreation, and Park Board for the terms ending May 1st, 2024.
Deborah Tompkins, second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that completes our appointments, unless there are others that were not listed on our agenda this evening. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, thank you. Item number six would be Board of Education liaison, I'm not sure that we have anybody in attendance from the Board of Ed. Do we have anybody, Kevin?
I do not believe so.
Okay, thank you. They've been very busy, but we'll move on ahead.
You may want to check with one of the phone calls. I know that Becky was thinking about calling in tonight, were you able to check those numbers to make sure she's not one of them?
I'll try.
Okay.
Hello, this is Kevin, this is phone number 2535. Would you like, is this from someone from the board?
No, I'm not on the board.
Oh, sorry?
No.
And next, I don't remember the number, so I'm guessing off the top of my head here. This is 2411.
No, I'm not part of the board, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Bill Pettis, the other one, so I don't believe you have to ask him, so.
All right.
We'll give him another chance during my report if he wants to speak.
Okay.
Okay, I will go ahead and assume that we do not have a report from the Board of Education. So we'll just move on to our next item, Report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Chomack, do you have anything to share with us?
You have to unmute. You have to unmute.
Yes, no report tonight from the town attorney's office.
Thank you very much for joining us.
You're welcome.
Moving on, Robert, we are now at the Report of the Town Manager. You have a few things to share with us, so I'll let you take it over.
I do, thank you. First one is the discussion of the SRO position at the middle school. Police Chief Matt Katania and Superintendent of Schools Steve LaPage have recently discussed adding a school resource officer at the middle school. The approved school budget included approximately $28,000 to hire a school security person at the middle school. Mr. LaPage inquired with Chief Katania if it would be more beneficial and effective to hire an SRO instead of a school security person. I think at the beginning of the discussion, I think Mr. LaPage was looking to perhaps take the half-year police officer that the council put together and meld that with the funds that they had. But, and he was recommending that because the SRO position at the high school has been very successful. Chief Katania felt having an SRO at the middle school would be a more valuable addition to the community and to the students. But the town was recently notified that the health insurance rates through the state partnership plan beginning in October is now expected to be significantly less than the 3.5% that was budgeted. This will allow the BOE budget to absorb the cost of the new SRO position. This proposal was discussed at last week's Board of Education meeting, and the members unanimously voted to move forward with the SRO pending town council review and concurrence. While a formal vote is not necessary at this time, Chief Katania would like to move forward with the hiring of an additional officer to be ready for the start of the school in September. Most likely, he would pick a police officer within the department to be the SRO, but he would like to, before, you know, instead of moving somebody into that position, he'd like to have another police officer onboard to consider, you know, to take the position so we don't lose, you know, the ability to, for that person to, you know, take them off patrol, so to speak. The additional, the additional police officer, this would be the SRO, would also be available to the department when school is not in session, especially during the summer months. I know that I spoke to the chief today as well, and, you know, we've had some conversations about people who have expressed interest in being police officers. The chief was gonna check with somebody who was very much interested in coming to Plainville who was now certified in another community. So that would, if we were able to attract that person, we wouldn't have to go through what might amount to 10 to 12 weeks of training, and, you know, so we have an opportunity to bring somebody on relatively quickly and not have to go through the training process, somebody that the chief has already interviewed several times and feels it would be a good candidate coming forward. So we'd like to, if the council is supportive of the Board of Education's decision, we'd like to begin to move forward with, perhaps seeing if that person would like to come onboard in Plainville relatively quickly, so that we would save the town a significant amount of dollars training the person, you know, during the interim, so. I know Kathy, you were at the Board of Education meeting, so I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
Yes, I did participate at the last Board of Ed meeting, speaking about this plan to use the dollars that the Board of Ed had already budgeted for a security guard and supplementing it with additional dollars to actually have an SRO. Both of those positions are very, very different, and the SRO, as Robert had indicated and has Superintendent LaPage noted, are very valuable additions to their school community, and it's worked out extraordinarily well at the high school and expected to be just as successful at the middle school. So it was a conversation that was well received by the board, and they were all very much in favor of that, because they understand how well Jessica has worked in terms of the high school SRO position. So it was positively received. I did want to ask you, Robert, because we are talking about some savings in our health insurance, do you have the numbers to provide the council as to what those savings or those, the less dollars we're gonna be spending for the insurance that would help pay for this?
I do, I do. And there's savings on both the town side and the Board of Education side, based upon the numbers provided by the finance director, and Rob, I believe, is still on the meeting. The savings on the town side would be just under $50,000 for the year, and the savings on the Board of Education side would be almost $174,000. We're not recommending that the, you know, in fact, we are recommending that we be very cautious about these monies and how they're spent, because we have, you know, several, probably a lot of unknowns as far as, as far as what, you know, the next year is gonna bring us, especially as it relates to COVID-19 and some of the costs that we are expending to address that as well, some of it of which will be reimbursed by the federal government and maybe some from the state government. But the additional dollars that we're talking about here to support the SRO position, to make it, you know, make it an SRO instead of a security person, is somewhere in the area of $36,000 to $38,000. So that's not, you know, compared to the $174,000 that the Board is gonna save on their budget, we feel that that's, if the council is receptive to that, that that's not, you know, the value of adding that, you know, certainly outweighs the, you know, the reduction somewhat to that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And yes, of course, the dollars are certainly going to be worthwhile for the Board to, and for the town to put an additional school resource officer in place. So thanks for providing that information, we appreciate it.
Okay, if there's no other comments with regards to the school resource officer, I'll move on, but I'll give council members the opportunity if they choose to. All right, seeing none, I'll move on to number two, which is the COVID-19 update. I'll give you some statistics. As of yesterday, Plainville had 127 confirmed cases of people with COVID-19. Statewide confirmed cases total 37,419 persons. Hartford County has the third highest number of confirmed cases behind Fairfield County and New Haven. I was surrounding towns. Confirmed cases include Bristol with 495, New Britain with 766, Southington with 268, and Farmington with 183. And these are all people who are immediately surrounding us. There have been over 3,000 deaths associated with COVID-19, as well, with 69 of those deaths occurring this past Saturday alone. According to Shane Lockwood, the Regional Health Director, the district continues to have new cases. This is to be expected somewhat because more and more testing is available. The district continues to distribute PPEs to first responders, home health agencies, and nursing homes. On May 20th, restrictions put in place by Governor Lamont several months ago will begin to receive. While indoor dining will still be prohibited, outdoor dining will be allowed with some restrictions. The governor has ordered that zoning restrictions with outdoor dining be processed quickly through an administrative process, and we'll do that through town staff. Towns are still awaiting guidance from the state regarding public pool operation during the summer months. The decision whether to open the burner pool will not be made until guidelines are determined and reviewed. Some towns have already canceled their pool operation for the summer, but I feel that we should at least wait until the guidelines come out from the state before, you know, presenting that to the council for at least consideration. The municipal center will open to the public by appointment only beginning next Tuesday, May 26th, with open access to the public on Monday, June 8th. Alterations are being made to the town facilities to protect both employees and the public and to maintain social distancing policies. The senior center and library will remain closed for the time being, as these facilities tend to attract larger amounts of patrons, and social distancing guidelines cannot be maintained in a reasonable manner, at least not the way they're configured right now. Staff at both the senior center and library are working to adjust their programs and facilities to allow for some of their operation and services to reopen. Limited facility openings are not expected to incur until at least June 20th. At this point in time, I'd like to give Dr. Pettit the opportunity to perhaps supplement this report, if he has anything to add. Kevin, I would point out that he's on the 0072 phone number, if you want to check with him to see if he wants anything.
You know, I think that the only thing I'd add, a little confusion today with the change in policy not allowing hair salons to open up on Wednesday after the governor consulted with the governor in Rhode Island. And there was some 3,500 hair salon folks that had signed up to petition the governor to hold off because they thought it was too soon. I had concerns from the beginning, because I was concerned about how much of the PPE would be pulled away from, you know, first responders, firefighters, police, emergency responders, skilled nursing facilities to go into the retail. So I thought we, though the PPE issue, the personal protective equipment has improved, we're still sort of playing catch-up week to week. The reopening committee is having a public session tomorrow at 2:00 PM on the internet, and that should be posted on my page. People will be able to, from the public will be able to ask questions to that committee. I don't know how many they'll get to, there are thousands and thousands of people online, but that was an announcement just late this afternoon, so they didn't give us much of a heads up on that, on that meeting. I don't know if there's any other, any other questions I can help with. Shane's been, you know, our public health director's been doing a great job, and has been on top of things, and I think it's been a great resource. We tried to lobby the governor to have somebody from one of the local public health districts on that committee, because they're sort of the boots-on-the-ground, the people on the front lines that talk to the businesses and I think have a better handle on things that need to be done, because this concern about the salons has been going on for two, three weeks. They're very concerned that they wouldn't have the equipment, wouldn't be able to have the protections in place. And obviously, there's a big group of people that thinks, you know, we needed to open two weeks ago, so there's certainly opinions all over the place, but for now, we're, the salons are closed down for a couple of weeks, but the other facilities, as noted, retail establishments are gonna partially open up again on Wednesday. I think I'll hold it there. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
You're welcome, and I have been in constant contact with Superintendent of Schools Steve LaPage regarding graduation ceremonies today, working with some guidance from the State Education Department and State Health Department that issued some guidance last Friday, and working with the health director. It looks as if at least the high school graduation will go on at the high school. It will be kind of a, certainly a very unique program that will involve people coming in their automobiles and staying in their automobiles, but they will be able to gather together, and the students will be able to receive their diplomas on June 12th. And I know that there'll be, you know, over the next several days on how exactly that will work, so. But at least he has a focus and knows what's available to him in terms of a process, and I know that was a big step for, that he was concerned about, whether we could even have one at all, so I think that's good news. If there's no questions with regards to COVID-19, I'll move on to the long-term recovery planning. The state of Connecticut has encouraged municipalities to create local recovery committees to identify gaps and develop a comprehensive understanding of which members of a community might need more support in the recovery process, more particular Plainville than, you know, one side fits all around the state. The committee would also be an effective channel to communicate to the state emergency management team major gaps or needs that may require a state-level response. I have appointed the following individuals to serve on the local recovery committee. First is Cal Hawberger, who will also serve as the long-term recovery coordinator, Sean Cohen and Rhonda Guberman from, representing the seniors, Roberta Brown, representing the youth, Pam French, Social Services, Lynn Davis, Plainville Community Schools, and Antonella Calabrese from the business community. If desired, town council representatives could serve on this committee as well. I know that there's both Cal and Lisa and myself, we've participated in a PowerPoint presentation, kind of explaining how this all works, and it's really geared towards a committee looking at things that are happening in Plainville that are particular of Plainville, as opposed to, you know, more holistic approaches that might be, you know, statewide in nature. So I don't know if anybody has any questions with regards to that, but certainly if there's council members who want to participate in this discussion as well, or if you know anybody else who might want to participate in the discussion as well, we certainly would keep, you know, get them involved. Hearing no comment at this point in time, I'd like to go over to the financial dashboard, which was posted on our website last Friday, and I know Kevin will put it up. These numbers are all through April 30th, except for the hauler tonnages related to recycling. Our total town budget expenditures, it stands at right at 79.21%, two-year average is somewhere around 78.09%, so it's tracking, you know, pretty much in past years. On the general government side, we're tracking a little bit higher, you know, maybe a couple of percentage points, but nothing, you know, alarming from, you know, from our perspective. Board of Education budget is about one percentage point within the two-year average, it's 72.87%. And I think a lot of their savings will... And I think a lot of their savings will, you know, will occur over the last, last couple of months as far as their budget is concerned. With regards to police overtime, we have we have spent a little bit over our budget. We're at 101%. You know, through April 30th, but we've been reporting that, you know, that trend to the council, you know, with our dashboard discussions. Roadway overtime is over as well as they do some work with the, with mostly related to leaves, leaf collection, but also some roadwork as well. You know, some work dealing with the, with the I believe some of it may be related to the parking lot at Norton Park as well. Buildings and grounds overtime is a little bit over budget as well, which we've been reporting at previous meetings. But the snow overtime for both roadways and buildings and grounds are, we actually had a good year this year, so those came up, you know, significantly under budget. And while it's really hard to know for sure whether the snow season is actually over, since we did have some snow last week, we feel the accumulation will probably not occur. And that's, those, those numbers will probably be final ones for this fiscal year. With regards to hauler tonnages, we've continued our trend running over the two-year average. Represents about $44,000 over budget right now. People are throwing away more trash. Hauler tonnages for recycling, they're the same numbers as we had for last month. We did not get updated, updated figures as of late last week. On the revenue side, we have your revenues, we've collected, of all our revenues in the current year's budget, we've collected 98.12% of our budget. Budgeted figures, two-year average is right around 97.74%, so running a little bit ahead of past years. As far as our current taxes, we've collected 99.54%. That's pretty much spot on to what we've collected in current taxes, you know, this, you know, in past years. We just have to collect $216,000 more in current taxes in order to meet that 100%, of what we had budgeted. With regards to our fund balance, no change from our last meeting. We're standing at 9.45 million dollars, understanding that $300,000 in the current year's budget would be used for, or at least we have it pegged for fund balance use, which would leave us at the end of April at 15.3% above the policy that you're considering this evening. With regards to our special funds, recreation fund expenditures is running under the two-year average, not surprisingly, since some of, you know, a lot of those programs have been canceled, you know, in the spring. Our recreation fund budget revenues are a little bit ahead of schedule, although some of that may relate to doing online registration for summer camp. And, you know, we're not quite sure where summer camp is going yet. I know that Courtney Ewitt is putting together some cost benefit analysis of what she, because there's going to be the requirements to run a summer camp are going to be more restrictive than in the past, which is going to drive up our expenditures. She's going to give me, and I'll share with the council. You know, we feel that the revenue will not necessarily pay for all of the expenses, and we at least want to give the council information with regards to that to determine if you want to still go forward with the summer camp program. I expect that we'll have something by the end of this week with, with regards to that. I know that some of that will be offset with the fact that if we don't open the pool, that's going to save us some money on that side as well, but, you know, we're not looking then necessarily not open the pool unless, you know, just, just until we get the guidance, which may be relatively restrictive as well. With regards to Robertson Airport, our current fund balance stands at $567,000. Revenues are pretty, pretty much spot on where we expect them to be with regards to our our expenditures. We're, we're running a little bit over the budget. However, that has to do with some of the special projects that the aviation commission has engaged upon to spend down some of the fund balance because there are some needs at the airport as well. Water pollution control facility budget expenditures are, you know, pretty much in line with previous years and revenues as well, nothing of any significant consequences. Plainville library expenditures are running pretty much on the expenditure side, pretty much at budgeted amounts. On the revenue side, you'll see where the, where we've only received about 85% in previous years. That's been about 96%. A good portion of that has to do with the performance of our trust funds, which have been underperformed over the last several months. So the revenue from the trust funds is not up to expectations or anticipation. However, you know, over the last, even today, there may be some turnaround. So we'll see how that ends up at the end of the at the end of the fiscal year, which is only less than, you know, about a month and a half away. As far as the major projects report, we spent some money on the road bond. The phosphorus removal project. We're still anticipating about a $625,000 or 600, excuse me, $34,000 coming under budget at this point in time. Willow School Project is winding down. And the other projects are, are pretty much the same as past years, or at least, you know, or past reports, I should say. So if, that's all I have on on the dashboard. If there's any questions, we try to answer them. I know Rob's on board as well, so if we need to have any more detailed information, he can provide that as well.
Are there any questions for Robert regarding the financial dashboard? Okay, thanks, Robert. Do you have any happenings for us tonight?
Well, before, yeah, yes, I'll go to happenings. And yes, and we do have some. I know Kevin has just put up on on the screen some mobile food share locations around Plainville for 2020, which I will, that'll be a portion of the happenings report, but we're going to keep that up there because, you know, in case people want to see that or viewing it, because it's a lot of information on there. But I'll start with tax and assessing. Sewer bills are due, are due by June 1st, 2020. Taxpayers have applied for the deferment program on the governor's executive order. Then the due date is August 1st, 2020. Taxpayers can send their bills in by mail, deposit into the Dropbox or pay online. I will point out that the ACH fees of $1.50 per transaction, and that's charged by the bank, have been waived by Webster Bank from now until October 31st, 2020. Credit cards still have a fee, but if you do them by ACH, then that fee will be waived. On April 20th, 2020, the Plainville Town Council voted to adopt a deferral program for property tax relief during COVID-19 pandemic. This program is an extended grace period program. What is deferred is not the tax, but rather the last day to pay without interest. The deadline is deferred, not the tax. Eligible taxpayers are entitled to defer their payment deadline until three months from the tax due date instead of the usual 30 days. An application is required for a deferment, and the criteria to be eligible is you have to fill out the application and and at least attest to the fact that your household has suffered a reduction in income of at least 20%. Applications are available online. They're also available at the municipal center at the entranceway. For those who want to stop by, you don't have to come into the building. There's a box outside where the tunnel is, which is on the east side of the building next to the to the left of the stairway. Next item I have is mobile food share. Mobile food share brings perishable foods, including fresh foods, fresh fruits, sorry, and vegetables, dairy, meat, and bread directly to people in need. The service is available to everyone 16 years and older. The truck visits multiple sites, including Plainville High School every two weeks. In fact, they were there today at Plainville High School, and they'll be there two weeks from now. It's the Plainville High School location. They're there from 11 to 11:30 every other Monday. So they were here this Monday, so it'll be two Mondays. And you'll see that there's locations in Southington, and Plainville people can go to Southington. They can go to New Britain. And there's a, you know, so there's also, you know, locations in New Britain they can attend as well. Also including our own Plainville Food Pantry, which is by, can be done by calling the food pantry. And also the Seventh Day Adventist Church, which has food share bags available every Thursday as well during the day. So there's, there's, there are opportunities for people to get perishable foods and non-perishable foods at those locations. And these, this slide will also be posted online for, for those people who can't write it down quick enough or need to refer to it later. With regards to the Fire Marshal Emergency Services, Connecticut Business and Industry Association has partnered with the state's emergency management system to offer masks to local businesses. 76 businesses in Plainville have now taken advantage of the offer, and a total of 2,494 masks have been delivered. Small essential businesses may still request masks through the CBA portal. Recommend you go to CBI portal. The Fire Marshal's office will be putting videos on the Plainville Fire Department Facebook page to promote fire safety. The first two topics are gas grill safety and cleaning and inspecting your dryer and lint trap. The library reopening against is to be, reopening is to be determined. The senior center. Although the senior center is closed for in-person programs and activities, staff is available by phone during regular business hours. There you are going to have a free mask distribution for seniors Wednesday, May 27th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Friday, May 29th, from 10:00 to 12:00 PM. 10:00 in the morning until 12:00, 12:00 noon, I guess. Senior Center members and Plainville residents 60 and over are invited to stop by the senior center to receive free masks, compliments of a charity program started by Bob and Amy Stefanowski. Mask for Connecticut, mask for, I guess it's Mask for Connecticut. I guess that's the name of their program. Mask for Connecticut has been distributing masks to people on the front lines, including healthcare workers and first responders. Now, the campaign is aimed at being sure residents across Connecticut have protection they need. Many thanks to Mask for Connecticut, State Senator Henry Martin, and State Representative Bill Pettit for their efforts in distributing these masks as well. And I'll give Dr. Pettit an opportunity to speak when we're done with, if he wants to add any, anything to that at the end of happenings. The senior center also has chair fitness classes with Jared. Classes will meet Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 AM. Fitness sessions will be 30 minutes of moderate intensity exercise to include everything from squats to stretches to upper body exercises. Much of the routine is based around a chair. But you will get up and be moving as well. Call the senior center to register or sign up online. At the senior center, a Zoom link and password will be provided once you register. There's also going to be Tai Chi for beginners and what they call seated Tai Chi. Both classes will be taught on a Zoom by Walter Bruce. The Zoom link will be sent to you once you register. There is no charge to take the class. A beginner's Tai Chi class will begin Thursday, May 28th at 10:00 AM. And seated Tai Chi class begins Thursday, May 20th at 11:00 AM. I guess you could do both if you want, you know. Tai Chi is a slow-moving gentle exercise program that helps strengthen the body and, and focus the mind while helping the body to become healthier through deep breathing and relaxed posture. As a safety reminder, please find an area in your home that is free of possible fall hazards. Call the senior center to register. They have another program calling Talk with a Nurse on Zoom. That's going to be on Tuesday, June 2nd at 9:30 AM. The senior center nurse, Georgia Sturpka, will present a program on Zoom to discuss coronavirus/COVID-19, how to keep yourself protected the proper way, and to put on and remove a face mask, review current health, safety guidelines, and more. There will also be time for questions and answers. Call the senior center by Monday, June 1st at, you know, by 2:00 PM to register and receive a Zoom link and password. Future programs will include free telephone bingo with Evelyn, Silver Sneakers Chair Exercise Class, Jared Presents Sweet Potatoes 101. Not quite sure what that's about, but sounds interesting. Indoor Adventures with Jared and Virtual Book Club. Those will be offered a little bit later on in the, in the year, later on in, you know, next month. So we'll report on that. Perhaps it's the first meeting in June. I would recommend that people, if they have any questions about anything that we're dealing with the senior center, to call 860-747-5728 for more information. For the town clerk's office, June is dog licensing month. Postcard reminders will be mailed this week. Please contact the clerk's office if you no longer have a dog. Renewals can be done by mail or Dropbox, and will be issued on a first come, first served. Online licensing will also begin on June 1st. We encourage people to use that. By executive order, the grace period has been extended from July 1st to August 1st to register your dog. Schools, parents with young children are invited to join the Plainville Family Resource Network for virtual circle time on Facebook. Ms. Carolyn and Ms. Teresa will be live Monday and Wednesday mornings at 10:30 AM. Also Monday evenings at 6:30 PM for pajama storytime. Please note the videos are available anytime on Facebook for you to watch at your convenience. Please reach out to the Plainville Family Resource Network with any questions, concerns, resources, or needs that you may have. They are there to help, and their contact information by phone is 860-793-6304, extension zero. And there's also an email address. We'll post that online on our website. And you can also like them on Facebook at the Plainville Family Resource Network. So all that information will be noticed as well. With regards to the 2020 census, as of yesterday, Plainville reached almost a 91% self-response rate. That's 70.9%. Our goal is to improve Plainville's self-response rate by 3% over the 2010 census, which was not done online, which means that we'd like to see 79% self-response rate. We will continue to promote public awareness with strategically placed lawn signs on municipal properties. Residents are urged to respond online at www.2020, that's 2020census.gov. That completes the report on happenings. I'd like to ask Dr. Pettit if there's anything he would like to supplement with regards to happenings or anything he'd like to add at this point in time before concluding my report.
Boy, Robert, pretty, pretty comprehensive. Yeah, the, glad you mentioned the masks at the senior center. Some of the seniors may venture out. We were asked a lot about that, and it was nice of called Amy Stefanowski, and she was right there and donated. I think we have about 1,500 masks available for distribution that they supplied brought us, which, which was nice. And I don't, I don't think anything else. You're, you're pretty comprehensive. Thank you for that.
Well, and I guess what we're trying to point out is despite the fact that, you know, we have limited access to a lot of our buildings, you know, there's still a lot of things that are going on. I will point out that the library did open today, and we reported this at the last meeting, where people can order books at the library, and they will be left, if they're available. They'll be left out the next day at the at the, outside the library where people will put their name on them, and people come by and pick up books. So that'll be limited to Plainville residents. Some other towns are doing that as well. But, you know, we're, we're going to open up that service again. So encourage people to utilize it. Although you can go online and get eBooks as well, which I've done myself. It's a little bit of a learning curve, but it's, you know, it is convenient once you learn the process. That's all I have. The report. If council have any, any questions of me or comments, certainly we try to answer them for you.
Thank you, Robert. You had a lot of, lot of information there this evening. I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Robert before we move on to our next section? Okay, thank you again. Next section is public comments. I did, we did receive one email from John Kislik. He wished everybody good health and had some observations regarding masks and topics related to and topics related to COVID requirements. So we did receive his email to be entered into the public comment section. So with that, we'll be moving on. We do not have any old business to report. So on to our new business section and we do have a few items that we need to approve. So may I have a motion to approve item number one regarding the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act, please?
Madam Chair, Deborah Tompkins. Motion to approve the following proposals for the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act. One, the Congregational Church of Plainville, United Church of Christ Energy Efficient Initiative, $150,000. Two, Prudence Crandall Center Annual Appeal for $150,000. And three, Prudence Crandall Center Energy Efficiency for $30,931.
Madam Chair, Dave Wonderwood, I second that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Item number two, please. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing Chief Executive Officer to Enter Into Restated Intercommunity Agreement Regarding the BRRFOC.
You have a second?
Madam Chair?
Just Wazorko.
Christopher Wazorko, I'll second that.
Thank you. This, before we vote, just as a reminder, this resolution was discussed at our last meeting through the town manager. So if there are any questions or concerns, he's available for, to answer them. Otherwise, I will ask for all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for that. Item number three, we added an item, which is to approve the Town of Plainville General Fund Policy. May I have a motion for that, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Christopher.
Right, Christopher Wazorko. I'd like to make a motion to approve the general fund policy as presented by the General Fund Policy Subcommittee in the May 18th Town Council Packet.
Deborah Tompkins, second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions on that motion? Thank you. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none? Motion passes. Item number four, please.
Madam Chair, Deborah Tompkins' motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
You have a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Christopher Wazorko, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I believe that's all that we have under our new business. Other discussions of interest, Mr. Lee, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I do not have anything for this evening's meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I would like to just add happy and safe Memorial Day that's coming up. This is going to be a different Memorial Day than we're used to, but nonetheless, it is always a time to pause and reflect on those that served our country. I do believe the veterans associations are going to be placing wreaths and things of that nature as they normally did at the various monuments throughout town. I don't have the specifics on that, but Robert, if you could find out, just for interest sake, if you could send out a schedule of when they'll be doing that? Can we do that this week or by, by the end of the week, please?
Yes, we can do that. Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So with that, wishing all happy and most importantly, safe and healthy Memorial Day to all of you. All right, we do not have anything for our executive session and I would, at this point, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, thank you all very much and stay well, please.